Okay, welcome and thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Welcome also to anyone who's watching online. Do I have any apologies? I believe the-
Counselor.
Counselor, thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No. Okay. Item three is to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 5th of August and the extraordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 18th of August and to note the minutes of the Town Enhancement Working Group held on the 29th of August. Unless there are any objections or questions of record, I propose that we consider this as one item, in which case I would like to propose that they're accepted. Can I have a second please?
I'll do a second.
Counselor Robyn, thank you. Are all in favour? Thank you. So, straight on to item four. So, before I go any further, the primary purpose of tonight's meeting is so that we get to item eight at the end, which is the budget. The items that are going to come up ahead of that are, they're a part of the ongoing work with Town Promotion and will relate into the budget as it comes up later, except for two items which I am moving to after item eight, and that's number five, the land train, and six to Madeira Walk waterfall update. So, they will not have any impact on the budget, and so I'm moving them to come to the end. At which point, if I can hand over to Rebecca for your update on working with Fannick District Council, please.
Yes, this is just really in lieu of generally council's request to note how that relationship is evolving. And so, there is a larger report, which I think we've all got as an appendix when Dean sent out the agenda, but it's too much to print. So, this is really just a synopsis of that, so you've got an overview. But as far as to say, it's been a very successful campaign, and we're building on that with some great ideas that have come through, with working with essentially Julie Edwards from Fannictourism and Dean, which we hope to progress. So, it isn't about it for next year, which the council and Dean will discuss shortly. But yeah, we're really pleased with it. It's interesting, the Dutch market is the market that are, they're looking for things that are active and they're looking for things that have got heritage. So, you know, it's interesting, we're looking at that as a focus. And yeah, that's really, it's really a report to note.
It's a valuable part of funding is doing that work with TDC. The recommendations to note the vast summary of the report. Were there any questions or any queries relating that, clarification? Okay. So, we will note that report, if that's okay. Item five is moved, so I'm just going to move that piece of paper. Item six one, in that case, to receive the update report from Rebecca on the town promotion work that she is doing generally. Back to you again Rebecca. It's been hard tonight for a while.
And so, we've, since we last met, we've had a couple of, well, we've had quite a few events actually. An inaugural event with the Ramsgate District Cultural, Portical, Hort, I can't say it. Somebody say it. Auticultural. Auticultural summer show, which was a really successful event. They're very happy with their first, their first event and hope for that to become an annual event. Festival of Sound had a fantastic week, there was an amalgamation of Puujim Week, Heritage Open Days, which Ramsgate had more than the other towns and villages put together for events to attend during that 10 days. And Festival of Sound, of course, who on a limited budget did an amazing job, I think, and that's the feedback they're getting. If anything, I think the only feedback they had that was negative was there was just too much going on because of all the events that were happening.
National Garden Scheme was also on that weekend.
And we, yes, and the, there was, I think there were five or six for the National Garden Scheme, so that same week as well, wasn't there?
There was, oh, there was four of us on Sunday.
And quite a few of those were as part of-
We were the Ramsgate Gardens.
They were a part of it as well. And that's all fundraising events as well, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, for nursing charities.
And we've had our first Association of Dunkirk Little Ships meeting. We're hoping to run a four-day event, and at the moment it looks like we've got around 30 little ships coming next year, which is a record number for the return. So, as many people know, we have the ten, the five-year pilgrimage, and then the year after that, they come as just a little return. They don't go to Dunkirk, they just return to Ramsgate. And this is the most that have ever, at this point, said they're coming back. We think that number may be even higher, so we're very pleased about that, and we're working towards that event. There's a book being launched next, on the 7th of November, everybody's welcome, and it's pictorial photos from David Babine, and it's produced mainly by Mike Goldwater. Switch ons on 30th, obviously as many people around as possible would be fantastic. We'll bring this, lippers and gloves. Make use of you all. On the day, we always appreciate lots of volunteers.
What date is that, 30th?
30th, Sunday 30th of November. We're, we're teaming up, so it's also the launch of the Ramsgate Winter Festival, which is the new name for Lumiere. And we're teaming up with Discovery Planet, who are running a Santa sleuth, it's really hard for me to say that, Santa sleuthing science event. She did it on purpose.
That was the science science event.
Yes. And they're running an event in Albert and Charlotte Corpse, so there may be some crossover to with Ramsgate Space. And we've got a parade leading up to the church, so it's all happening. So, it's a really nice, becoming a really nice complete event. There's obviously live entertainment, the mayor will switch on the lights, Granville Theatre are involved, et cetera. So, yeah, that's all looking good. Pirate Day, yes, hoping for Pirate Day, that's looking good. It's a fundraiser this, no, not this weekend, the following, on the 1st of November at the New Belgium Bar. Renee, we've met several times, and she's attended the Ramsgate Event Organisation meetings as well, and that's hopefully going to be on the 6th of June. And then the, with David Green, Council Green, and I have met GB Sup, as in Stand Up Paddle Boarding Championship. They actually live in Ramsgate and they'd like to have the finals here next year, and that would be in October, which would be a nice sort of shoulder event. And we're just waiting to hear that from them. Events calendar, as you all know, has gone now in-house, and it's, it's going really well. Katie's doing a fantastic job. And it is now called What's on Ramsgate with a question mark. Dean and Katie have also created a link tree, which includes things like Don't Miss Ramsgate. So, again, we're sort of trying to broaden all of those, work with the people, other people that are promoting events, so that's, Don't Miss Ramsgate has a weekly newsletter, please sign up for it, and that comes out every Saturday, and she captures events that we haven't, people that have got last-minute bits on. So, that's working really well. We're just about to produce the one for November, which is looking lovely, and Shaun's doing a great job doing all the deliveries on that, too. New lights are up, and we got confirmation about unmeted supply account today for the lights in York and Queen Street, which is another small achievement, unlike the next one, which is a huge achievement. We've also got the feeder pillar and had a three and a half thousand pound rebate.
I'm not saying, sorry, Chair, can I come in here? Just sort of the truck. Lights look fantastic, you know, as the nights get darker. The lights are wonderful this time of year already, and I have spoken to a lot of people recently in Broad says and Margate and other places that know they can't match us for lights, they are really impressed with Ramsgate, and that, I wanted you to know that feedback. To the parts of Fannick, because, you know, they really are impressed, well done.
We shared an article on, from Lumen Radio, they're one of the main suppliers of our lights on Obelisk and the harbour, and they've, they've been really impressed with the idea and how they're looking, so they've done a full article. We've put their Facebook post up and put a link in the article for tech heads, it goes into quite a lot of detail, but, but the pictures are very pretty.
That's all that matters.
Yeah, exactly, pictures. And the technicians are working really hard at the moment with, because we got the extra budget, the extra funding rather, for the twinkly lights, and we've got that whole span that we were hoping to have last year, but we just didn't have the budget. And they're also making some new banners, so they're doing all of that from scratch. So, it's, and all the mapping as well, so it's, special thanks to Dom and Chris, who are doing an excellent job there. Dom also has just built a mini library, we're going to, that's gone to a local artist whose idea it was, and it's trial, but it's going to go in Charlotte Hall. And we think, you know, why not try it? And so, that's been made in-house. She's, she's going to decorate it and paint it, make it all pretty, and that went to her yesterday.
Do they need books donated?
We, any books donate, yes please, yeah. Other bits and pieces, so yeah, we've got that, finally got that finger post fixed, which is great, and they did go round and fix all the others and make sure they're all in place. Better late than never. Reached a lamb, a little milestone there with 500 view, 500,000 views now on all our maps. We have over, I think, 28 maps on, on the Visit Ramsgate website now, so anything from where you can get afternoon tea to where to shop for vinyl, which of course is very popular. Other than that, they are sort of really the highlights. The town team has reinstated the shop front grants, because we have got new shops opening. We've had obviously Subway in Harbour Street, we've had Violet and Rose, a new sort of perfume and boutique shop just at the top of the High Street, and there, I've had two, two businesses get in touch with me this week looking for spaces, and in fact, today I've been talking to Miles and Bar about how we can, and I've introduced them to a prospective business that wants to open up. So, it's, you know, we know that it is peaks and troughs, so hopefully we're coming out of that with those sort of positive moves. I've also mess emailed Subway and said, it's great that we've got a new shop in Harbour Street, please can you remove the signage from the one in King Street that closed five years ago? That would be very nice, so I wait to hear that. Other than that, we're, so we've obviously Pier Yard has started, that's the Luff first sort of sign of the Luff project within the town. Obviously, there's work going well up at Newington, and we're hoping to have a screen on the, on the museum, but we'll, we'll have to sit, wait and see what happens there. Possibly another event that might happen that's just hot off the press actually is, I was talking to the RAF today, and they're hoping the event they had in Hearn Bay last year, they may bring to Ramsgate in April next year. So, I've got to meet with them and the harbour master about where they can put these great big chaloupe-type things, so. And yes, I forgot to say that giant shop, coffee shop that's open, so all looking, it's all positive at the moment. And I think again, other than any questions? Maybe needs a note?
Thank you. Have you had any feedback on the events calendar? Take the one or the one on one?
Well, we felt, the first time we crammed so much in, we were worried about the font size, I mean, it was legible, but, and we've kept, but other than that. But we've, you know, that, we've, it's just because it's so popular, you know, everybody wants a copy, and if we, if we forget to deliver to a certain place, they'll get in touch with me, it's, you know, the people have got used to it now and actually really like having it. So, largely positive, but if anyone does have any feedback, any suggestions, please either give me a call or email me, and between us we'll try and, we're always ready to make improvements on it.
Counselor Shaun.
I'll observe, I'll do your last. Just two questions, mate. How do your books work? I might better have you on that.
How do?
His books.
Oh, what, the book, the, the little library? Yeah, any donations, please, yeah, drop them at Radford House. Thank you.
And the small shop grants for the frontage of the shops, how does that work? That's been rolling on for quite a few years now.
It has, and we've actually spent the 10,000 we allocated, which was, this is through the town team.
In the town that looked disgraceful already, but not therefore because they've been graffitied.
Yeah, well graffiti, we can, we can look at that or we can report to TDC, but as we do have a little disclaimer, so we, if we know the shops, if you let me know, I can talk to the technicians.
Be no cap, they don't know, it's not therefore.
But we will, we would, if we can, we would try and get that off for them, we just need them to sign a disclaimer in case, you know, we rub the paint off or something.
Anyway, I don't know, sprayed all that rubbish off my carriage wall, which is nice.
And of course, any graffiti is best reported via the TDC website, even if it is private property, because TDC now have an agreement.
Some of my garage, and it's all been claimed, so.
Yeah, well, just, just for the record, TDC do now have a practice whereby they will do graffiti removal other than just TDC property. They have to get permission from the owner, whereas before it used to be they had to instruct the owner to remove it, now they can say, you give us permission, we'll remove it. I think, just as a record then, there are some things we can't touch, so we can't touch things like the electricity boxes owned by the electricity boards, and there are some KCC road signs that we can't touch and some we can, and I can't remember the rest of it off the top of my head, but there are, there are a handful of things we can't touch, but we, we can do a lot more. It's all to do with that phone thing. It's all part of the phone stuff.
Also energy, you see, website?
Yeah, so just basically anything, anywhere, if it's graffiti, just whack it on the TDC website, and then if it can be removed, it will be. Any other questions? Otherwise, the report is for noting.
Brilliant, well done.
And just to say, it, you know, it's fantastic the amount that we've managed to get out of last year's budget, so before we move into this year's budget. I can't, I can't help but, but say that, can I, to face it? Okay, so it's back to you Rebecca for number, oh no, actually Dean, I think this is, actually, for number seven.
Okay, so this Town Promotion decided last budget to award anchor funding to two groups. Those were the Miss Ramsgate Organisation at 3,500 for travel subsistence and sundries, and GB Carnival 6,000 for core, event core costs. So, a review was requested, so Miss Ramsgate so far has spent 1,645.68p with five months left remaining, they have lots of events still to take until March, and the Carnival's review date isn't until January 26th, because we allowed them six months each to, to get their info to us. What I'm recommending is that we align the reviews, so we take them all at once, because doing it half now and then they're going to have to come back anyway, for better consistency in comparison. So, it's just to recommend to note the information received and to agree to conduct future anchor funding at the end of the financial year.
Yeah, so is that agreed?
Agreed.
Yeah. I think just very quickly on the Ramsgate Carnival one here, just very, very, very fast skim read of it suggests that all of the things that are on here are what we were saying to spend the money on.
Yep.
Which was, was basically sundries, it was to do with travel and subsistence, so it's just a reminder that that's what, and that's why it's so long, because it's all little payment sandwiches. So, just, just as a comment on why it's, it's come up in so many little bits and pieces, so I thought that was worth mentioning, so really great, thanks for allowing us to get that in, so. Okay. I think that was all just noted, wasn't it, and agreed that you're going to work to bring the dates in line, yeah. But it does mean that we don't have the Carnival paperwork and spend yet, but that's perfectly legit, because they're not expecting to have submitted it just yet, so.
That'll come back to February's Town Promotion.
Yeah, yeah. That will make a slight impact on the recommendations, because to continue anchor funding into the next year is subject to the completion of the submission of accounts, and obviously we can't make that decision fully at the moment. Thank you Dean. So, budget going forward, we are so much closer to this item in the agenda than I was expecting to be, so brilliant, thank you everyone for getting us this far this fast. You've got the summary in front of you, I can, you've got it on your screens. So, basically, there has been, some things are carried forward, some things are repeated, so looking down at the council events, we've allocated once again 10,000 pounds for a New Year Eve event, or a New Year event. We do not yet know on what that will be spent, that is, that doesn't have a specific spend at the moment. Generally speaking, generally speaking, over, over time, that's something that, whether it was fireworks or anything else, we buy in for someone else to actually put on, and to be honest, that's not a huge amount of money. Ramsgate Day is 6,000 pounds again, that's an increase, isn't it, if I remember rightfully?
Yeah, 1,000.
We increased that very slightly from last year, just to reflect that costs go up. New and council events, this is basically Rebecca's budget for things that might come up during the year, changes, unexpected events, you know, certain things we, we do expect, like we expected the Dunkirk, but sometimes there are, do not mention the one you always mentioned to me.
I'm not going to.
But there are sometimes unexpected opportunities that arise. There are, there are sometimes unexpected opportunities that arise that, that we can run, and so there is very, perhaps you, can you clarify, have you got anything earmarked within that budget at the moment?
We're, we're hoping to have a four-day event for the Little Ships return.
Little Ships, that's right, and that's, I knew there was something in there.
So, on the, on the, it's got the little breakdown of.
Yes.
Yep.
And the others are pending, yeah, so, yeah.
So, there is, there is one on there, thanks Dean, I wasn't looking at the next page there. Ramsgate Carnival and Miss Ramsgate, which was the anchor funding under community events, that is still part of the community events budget, they are required before the end of the financial year to provide evidence that they spent the money on the purposes for which they were granted the funds, if they want to get the anchor funding again next year. If they do not come up with that evidence, then the money that is not, that is currently anchor funding in here now will flip over into the, into the bigger events fund, so, because if they continue, then they would need to, to put in applications under the events fund as before. I have a question.
No, sorry, so if they're putting money, if they're putting applications in the events fund, why is it in this?
They're not, they're not.
Okay. So, they won't be, now on they won't be?
Yeah, if, if, let's just say if the carnival did not provide the evidence, I would not give them the anchor funding, they would have to apply anew as they did before, it's only-
When did it go into this?
Last year.
Did it?
Yeah, the anchor funding was introduced last year as a new concept, just for, I chose two events, and Rebecca and I discussed them along with the town clerk, and it came before the committee and then before full council as anchor funding. And so, what we did was we, we took it out of the events fund, they do not need to apply for it, and, and those two events were, because they were so classic, they were part of the historic whole Miss Ramsgate Carnival, that was, that was thinking, if you're looking at me, you don't remember it.
Don't, because I definitely would have remembered that, I tell you, so for some reason I've.
It was.
There, but anyway, okay.
And so, if either of them fail, and obviously the Miss Ramsgate have come back with their, their half-year account, so it doesn't look like they will fail. So, but if either of them fail to come back with the evidence, then they won't get it again, you know, it won't be rolled over, so it's conditional. But the events fund has gone up to 70,000. The qualification budget has dropped, hasn't it? Yes. Based really on what we think the actual expenditure might be with a little bit of flex in it. The, the rest of them are generally continuing with small amounts of increase. The other area that has changed mainly, I have upped the town promotion expenses, that is a very small budget, but I will mention it, because that's basically the petty cash fund, really. I think it's Rebecca's allowance for expenses, but it's also the, the fund which is treated as a petty cash fund if money is needed, small funds are needed at short notice, so it's always a tight budget at the end of the year, so that's gone up a little bit to give a bit more flex. Now, we had Active Ramsgate last time, which had its own very specific budget, that has now become a part of Visit Ramsgate budget, because we, whereas last year we introduced the concept of cultural Ramsgate, heritage Ramsgate, as well as Active Ramsgate, now with the, the new move, they've become one, so that has been jipped around a little bit, so Active Ramsgate Week, it's appearing as a new budget, but it's actually what was taken out of the Active Ramsgate budget for last year.
Again, as an aside, sorry, this is slightly off topic, but when is Active Ramsgate Week?
May.
And I sort of like, thought it was, I thought I was checking.
I think it's full half-term.
Yeah. So, again, speaking to people recently in Ramsgate, they were talking about how Ramsgate didn't necessarily have an identity, and I said, well, and they were like, why isn't it holistic and all this? And I said, well, it does have an identity, I said, it's very much like the Ramsgate and that is heritage, you know? And they sort of like agreed with me once I'd explained it to them, but they hadn't realised that before I explained it to them, so that message of what's our USB or whatever it's called, isn't out there at the moment, and I just wondered if that in particular for May, that's something that we could really push as a marketing campaign to what Ramsgate is renowned for, you know what I mean?
Active Ramsgate, I agree with you, Active Ramsgate was something that was really pushed, and obviously it was something that Council Green began 10 years ago, something like that.
I realise that.
But then the Active Ramsgate Week, for reasons I don't know, faded off until we brought in an Active Ramsgate manager, and then it got revived, so how many years has that been now? Is it just the two that Simon did?
Two, yeah.
Yeah, so, so it's, the Active Ramsgate Week is still relatively new as a, as a thing, so, but yes.
I'm saying, I mean, it, because it's, it's more than Active Ramsgate now, isn't it? It's very much culture and heritage, which I think is fantastic, but I think we, again, just need to push that those are the three things that make up Active Ramsgate, it's the culture, heritage, it's the wellbeing part of the active side bit as well, because a lot of people come over to this neck of the woods for those particular things and getting very well-known for it, which is part of this, so I'm just saying.
Yeah. I agree, I think the point I was just wanting was, it's only been going a couple, it's only been re-going for two years, so it's still- I, I agree. I agree. It, I think the point I was just wanted was that it's only been going a couple, it's only been re-going for two years. So it's still. Perhaps in some people's minds, still relatively new, um, in that respect maybe. Um. I've got the marketing quite a lot. Um, and that's because so often, um, a lot of marketing. Um, is paid for out of various other budgets. So budgets are, it's going to cost X to run a, a project. Uh, that often includes marketing, but, um, just really want to make, picking up again, going back to what you're talking about. Anything we can pump into marketing is, I'm, I'm always up for pumping more money into marketing.
Can't do an event if nobody knows Ramsgate. Just me also doing it.
Um.
Just to add on that chair. So originally it was two thousand. That covered the Active Ramsgate and the Visit Ramsgate brand. Now we're adding two more strands. It's kind of.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and.
Change from what it was two years ago.
That's been spent. Um, so, uh, I'm just. Yeah, we've got some money being carried forward from previous years for, uh, budget, uh, for things that haven't quite completed yet. Which, uh, is at the bottom. And so at that point, I'm just gonna go, any questions?
I don't already.
Sorry?
I think we haven't done already.
Okay. So are we happy to put that to, um, uh, F N G P?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Proposal and second of council and exee and all agreed?
Reading.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Chair, is the Carnival Miss Ramsgate overview?
They, they have, they have got to, um.
Just, just for a check off.
Yes, they've got to submit their.
Subject.
To them submitting their, um, final accounts as, as agreed, um, with the original, um, agreement from last year.
Brilliant.
Um, so, uh, it just takes them out of the, um. I mean, I mean, what I haven't done this year is considered any other anchor funding, but we also, um. Along with the anchor funding, we also introduced Ramsgate Day as a specific funded out of the coun- we took that out of the council events fund. So that we could specifically fund Ramsgate Day as well. So that was the, the three events that, um. Were selected as fitting in with the whole heritage culture, uh, theme that we, we introduced last year. So, um, that's it on that. Um, which means I can go back. Uh, Rebecca, I'm gonna start with the easy one first. Um, Madeira Waterfall update. Um, do you want to make any comments on that?
Um, well, really it was just to, to, to keep. Members informed on, on that. There's been a very slight delay. Uh, as you know, they did, they did, uh, start the waterfall running in full part of the summer. But that was purely to.
That was planned.
Yeah.
It was always gonna turn off.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, but at the moment it is scheduled to be back on permanently from the end of this month.
Hmm.
And then once they've got all of their invoices in, they're hoping to have enough funds left to cover, um. Putting the feature lighting and they're going to synchronise that with our lighting.
Hmm.
The arches. We've, we've real, there's a thing called a DMX port. Dean probably can explain it to you, but suffice to say. Suffice to say, it links, it links anything techie speak to Dean. Um, but it links with our units so that they'll be synced. So if we change those to red and green for the Christmas. And the, and the obelisk, which you'll see the community ad, Dean had the idea of putting the obelisk on the front. A great photo from Mark Stamford and it, it's gonna look excellent. So that is gonna be our Christmas community ad magazine. So that's brilliant. So if we do, and we, we are thinking we'll do to keep them all red and green for the sum, uh, for the Christmas. As you probably saw when you drove or walked down, they look fabulous, all the colours of the rainbow.
Beautiful.
And we've kind of tried different colours. But actually, that looks really cool when it's red. Yeah, like pink, green, orange, I haven't, but I won't say it.
Your advice.
Um, but we, we'll look at putting them red and green for Christmas to complement the, the Ramsgate illuminations, obviously the boats lighting up. Um, and, um, the, the waterfall will be the same colour.
Hmm.
So.
I have, I have three updates since you wrote this report.
Oh.
On, um, Albion Gardens. And I mean, just to remind, of course, this isn't actually an R T C, this is a T D C thing. Um, I have raised concerns about the, uh, bamboo in the gardens not having been removed at the roots. They've just cut it down and, and left a sort of like a little mound of it. It's quite, actually quite high. Um. I've got a site meeting hopefully with T D C officers next week, um, to actually look at the bamboo because, um. There are, what has arisen out of these discussions is that there is a confusion, um, in that T D C. At least some parts of T D C think that R T C are responsible for all of the gardening and all of the pullamite. And that's not the case. We do not have the, um, uh, the technicians don't have the equipment or the training to work on the pullamite. And the bamboo in particular is at the very edge of the top of the upper pond. Um, and literally if you make a slip on the pullamite there, you, you're back, you're, you're gonna drop down into the pond. Um, over the last, over the last year, um, some of the, uh, bamboo has been removed at the roots. Um, by let's say unauthorised persons, um, not R T C. Um, and so that's why I'm having a site visit with the, um, T D C officers to look at what is there and, and actually. Because the, the bamboo is reckoned to grow at an average of three to five feet per year.
Hmm.
And I think that means that every year, or at least every two years, someone's gonna have to go and do it. And if nobody thinks it's their responsibility, it's not gonna get done forevermore again. And then we're gonna be back where we started. Um, so that, that's the update on, um, I, I, I think, I think what's happened is because R T C have been in discussion with T D C. Over the years about taking over the gardens, I think there's just been some slippage in the messaging and, you know, where there's been staff changes. I, I don't think there's anything malicious or, or untoward in it. I think it's just slippage in the messaging.
And so these R T C technicians are who do the park.
Yeah, um, R T C technicians have no responsibility for any of Albion Gardens, but we help out with the mowing.
Hmm.
As and when, um, in, in cooperation, um, with, with the.
So is the bamboo going to be removed then completely?
Is the what?
Bamboo going to be.
That's what I'm going to discuss next week. I hope, I copied you into the email as well councillor, um, of the, into the email exchange. So it, that's what I think it needs doing, but, um, that's the positions that happen soon.
Bamboo, it does just round the top, the roof sits and they push the rocks apart.
Yeah.
Well, moving on. Yeah, that, that's, that's a part of, that's a part of my discussions that I intend to have.
Yes, and my question, lights in the Madeira Waterfall, can we have some improvement? Are we having some improvement in them lights?
They have upgraded them, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the previous.
And is it, is it working properly now? On or, on or?
They, they, they're testing that, but they, they're, the lights are the last bit that they're doing and if, but they have upgraded them. Um, and it's just whether or not they can afford the final part where they're coloured and coordinated synced with ours. But I think they will, because it's only about three and a half thousand.
Yeah. But again, um, so it, that's again, that's really back down to T D C. We're interested in it, but it's. The other thing is, um, at the moment I'm in consultation with John Walker from the Ramsgate Society. About the possibility of Restoration for Destiny. Um, that is still very, very early stages. And, uh, we're looking at getting quotes on, um, how that might be done. And then it will have to be negotiated with T D C. So that's down the line, but, um, that's happy. So note in the report, everyone agreed?
Yeah.
Brilliant, excellent. Um, that brings us to the exploration of a land train service between Ramsgate and Broadstairs now. I think I would just really, the recommendation, so number five and number six. Next steps and recommendation. Um. This is a really expensive project potentially and is not. Uh, it has not even been considered as part of the budget we've just agreed. And it's not even been discussed as a part of the budget. It would require, um, a capital, um, investment. That can only come via F N G P and for council. And so my recommendation is not what is written as the recommendation here. Um, but only that we, um, note the report and recommend, uh, that it is further debated at full council. Now, if anyone's got any questions or anything else, please, Rebecca, um, but, uh, I'm quite happy if people want to discuss it. But as far as the recommendation is concerned, I do not consider this as under town promotion, um, because it is a major project. It's in, it's in the, the realm of the bandstand and the lift and everything else.
Exactly.
That's it.
A capital.
Management.
Capital spend, um, that we can't consider.
It would be a nice thing to have, Chair, but it will be very expensive and it's not really a priority.
I, well, I think, I think it actually has to go to F N G P and then for council for, um, consideration as, as a capital spend. So i- if people are happy to note the report, if there's any questions, then, uh, Rebecca.
The only thing I would say is that there's, that one of the options is if we worked with Stagecoach. Because then it is part of their business. Then we, we wouldn't have that sort of large capital spend. Um, we, unfortunately, the, the chap, Phil Sampea, Sampea, that we're waiting to hear from, in fact, I chased today. He's, he's been, his email just says, I'm, I'm not in. And it doesn't give a time or date on return. Um, and that's been a month since the last email to him.
I, I think it's an interesting, I think it's an interesting project and I think it's worth exploring. Whether or not it's something we want to follow up, but it's not Town Promotion Committee. And that, that's my, that's my view. So, um. Anything else?
Hmm.
No. Okay. Uh, in that case, we note the report and, uh, recommend, um, that it be progressed to. Director for council or F N G P, what does that might get for?
For council.
For council, okay.
F G.
So director for council.
Yeah.
I'm quite happy with that. That, that was my, my first thought. In which case. The date and time of the next meeting is Wednesday, the tenth of December at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah. And thank you and good night.